There's folks. All hands on deck. Whether they actually files and so we'll see what is it. There's.
Some of us to declare can declare pass it to us.
To call this meeting to order, will you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Council President Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Member Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn. And Councilmember Perez.
Here.
We'll call Mr. Mayor all present.
All right, thank you. So we're going to start tonight off with a special presentation. We're receiving a couple of awards for a couple of different projects here in Renton. The Governor's Smart Communities Award for the Family First Community Center. And. Yes. There she is. Vanessa Delby will be saying a few words for us.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. There's two awards this evening. If I can be so bold as to start with the Legacy Award and then move on to the Family First Award second. But I also just want to state that I'm so grateful to be here for such a celebratory event and evening, especially since this is my last council meeting here for the city. So it's nice to be here in this celebratory moment. These Governor's Smart Communities Awards are really a source of great pride for us in CED. But also, it can't be accomplished without the unwavering support of the mayor and the council, councilmembers of the past, mayors of the past, to get to these, these awards here. Over the last 16 years that I've been here with the city, this commitment to a vision has absolutely transcended elections. And that's how you know this is really the community's drive and force forwards to create these places through that strong vision. So with that, I would like, and I get the distinct pleasure of introducing Michael Fong, the Director of the Washington State Department of Commerce. And I'd like to thank him for coming this evening to present the awards.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn, Council President Prince, members of City Council. Thanks for giving me a few minutes today. I have the great honor representing Governor Inslee and our Washington State Department of Commerce in congratulating you all for two awards, which is a little unusual, but it's quite an amazing and exceptional accomplishment for the city of Renton. And the vision and work, as Vanessa has described, that goes into the planning and coordination and community, coming together and collaborating on key projects that really will leave a legacy for, for many, many people in your community, for, for many generations to come. The first project that the governor recognized this year for the city of Renton is what we refer to as Legacy Award for long-term commitment to planning, yielding tremendous results in the community development space. And that would be the South Lake Washington Revitalization Project that started in the early 2000s. It sounds like, and I just met Vanessa tonight, but her persistence over 16 years of work really epitomizes the, the kind of visioning that is necessary to really see land use planning that has a tail to that vision for how long it might take to realize that vision in the future. And what's happening in the South Lake Washington area, the landing project, and the projects you have in the pipeline today that continue to realize this incredible opportunity two decades ago, and for that to come to fruition is really a testament to mayor after mayor, council after council, and a community committed to realizing that vision in the long term. So, so congratulations. We're really, we're very proud at the state level for, because I know a lot of, well, we would call it wonky land use decisions where necessary, cop plan changes, other kinds of amendments that you all need to go through, but critical work to lay the foundation for the economic development, community development activity that's underway today. So congratulations, well deserved. And I believe we have the actual award that we can present to you, Mr. Mayor, Council President, and, and then we'll turn it over to the, to the next description of the second award we have for you.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. The, you know, the, the Legacy Award really does speak to the fact that we have a lot of people that care about Renton and put a lot of work in. We have a number of our planning commissioners here. We have a number of elected officials that from the past that are here. We have, you know, previous mayor and a number of council members. And so, you know, having this opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of the past and, and look towards the future is fantastic. So we want to take this opportunity to actually have a photo with all of the participants in this. So I want to invite anybody that was involved in that project up for a photo, and the entire council will come down and take a large group photo.
Seems like the whole crowd.
Ahmad, are you on ceremony?
You're receiving the what? Do you want to stand there?
Because it's going to be too many.
Okay.
And we're not going to be able to sing. I'm sorry, I'm here because if not, we're too many.
You were supposed to put it in order before you got here.
You see, we're making you work the last day.
All right. Well, I want to thank everybody that that joined us tonight for the celebration. Really appreciate you coming and spending some time with us. And you're more than welcome to leave, or you can stick around and go through the course of business with us. So, all right, next up is the administrative report.
All right. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. Preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures will be available at the locations listed on our website. That is all, sir.
All right, thank you. Next up is audience comment. We do have a few people signed up to speak. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. You will have three minutes to address the council. Please give your name, city of residence, and the topic you'll be speaking on. First on our list is Matthew Dahl. Matthew? No, Matthew. Okay. We'll circle back Nancy Quinn.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, City Council. I'm here again back 16 years now. I've been coming to talk with you about the speed on the Maple Valley Highway. I live in Renton. We, two days before Christmas, had a fatality, as you well know. Recently, the Bullards going eastbound right after the Classics and the little shopping center there had been destroyed. I haven't been able to see what that accident was, but the key is speed. And Renton Police used to be really good about keeping that enforced. It's not happening anymore. So, transportation, we need to discuss what we're gonna do because lives are being lost constantly, and it's something avoidable. So, I'm partially responsible for those flashing lights because I've been complaining consistently over the years, but it's gotta be rectified. Somebody's gonna die. My daughter and I were sitting in the turn lane getting ready to turn into Fifth Street and almost got hit head-on by someone just not paying attention. So, I've asked for that part of the street to be closed. We've been down this road, so I just don't want it to be one of my friends and neighbors that live in that neighborhood. We're really lucky. There are about 200 homes built in the 1940s. We're a very close-knit neighborhood, and somebody's gonna be impacted very dangerously. So, please, would you address it in the Transportation Department or Committee? Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Bob Baker.
How you doing? Thank you for having me. I'm here on behalf of Save the Cedar River. Most of you or all of you know what that's about. Couple of months ago, over two months ago, I was here and asking for consideration to do an amicus brief, and at that time, I was to be taken under consideration, and that's the last I heard of it. So, I'm here to follow up on that. The clerk has some paperwork. Yeah, okay, so what that is, just as an extra follow-up, is the chief of, the fire chief of the Renton Regional Fire Authority, 2025 and 40, wrote a long letter about his concerns of this asphalt plant and what it would take for his crews and the dangers that it would take for him to get there. So, you all have a copy of that to read at your leisure. But the thing that I want to bring up is, if for some reason you don't believe me and you believe my opposition, you don't believe my scientists, that's fine, but what if I'm right? And what if my scientists are right? And 20 years down the road, there will be no Cedar River as we know it now. There'll be no fish. There'll be no Renton River days. There'll be a dead river. The drinking water that you enjoy now will not be the same drinking water. It will have to be coming from different wells. So, I ask again to please consider my amicus brief, and your city attorney has been in contact, I believe, with my attorney and knows all about it. So, if you have any questions, please ask. So, great. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next up is Eric Tran.
Good evening. My name is Eric Tran. I manage a commercial retail center just north, on North Bronson Way in Renton for over the last 10 years. I'm here to ask for your help in making public safety and crime prevention a priority to support our small businesses and the residents of Renton. In 2022, our center had over 200 reported incidents to the Renton Police Department, 200, and we only have 11 different businesses in our plaza. Most of these businesses are immigrants like myself, and they work their tails off to make ends meet for their family. They are still paying for the impact of COVID-19. Each of these break-ins cost them thousands of dollars to replace broken glasses, doors, windows, and the insurance company are not really making an effort to pay for the claim. We have a beauty school in our complex with many young women between the ages of 18 to 40. They have been harassed, robbed, their car broken into and stolen. They do not feel safe. Our retail store have been victims of armed robbery with cars driving through the storefront, smashing windows, destroying everything they built their lives around. Our medical and bakery tenant have had the metal doors drilled and pried open. Our pizza shop had its roof cut off on the top and the thieves dropping down, stealing, and vandalizing the property. This list goes on. Our plaza was on Como yesterday, not the way that we want to be on Como, but it was due to the break-in to our tenant, Joy Teriyaki. The driver drove through the front door of the business, stealing small items. As the reporter was interviewing the next-door tenant, Philly's Nail, the owner of that business was so frustrated and discouraged by the lack of crime prevention, he told the reporter that he wanted to shut down his business. It's just not worth it. I'm not sure how many of you in this room own or work for a small business, but I certainly hope that you didn't experience what I'm describing to you now. But if you have, I know that you would agree that we need help. I beg you, Mr. Mayor, City Council member, to do more. There are lots of reasons why people move out of Seattle to settle in Renton, and that is to find a place where their families can thrive. In Seattle, many families are avoiding going downtown due to crime, litter, and vandalism. We don't want it to happen here in Renton. It takes a lot of foresight and bold leadership by Mr. Mayor and City Council to prevent this from taking roots. We are Renton, not Seattle. Please, please, make public safety and crime prevention a top priority for small businesses and Renton residents. I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Frank Trin.
Apologies, let me just. All right. Hello, my name is Frank Tru, and our family owns Evergreen Beauty College. We have seven locations throughout the state here, and one of our campuses are in Renton right off of Bronson Way. So, it was explained to me that we're not in the hot zone for the crime here in Renton. However, if you talk to our 250 students, the 15 staff members, what their experience feels like a hot zone. I can't even imagine the neighborhoods that are in the hot red zone here in Renton. You know, our schools are in a lot of communities, and we work with different cities and different police departments. And one thing I do want to share is that I have to commend the Renton Police Department as they've shown the most care for our students and for our staff. They're professional. They've got really good intentions, but they're handcuffed by what they can do to ensure for the safety of our students and our staff and our customers. I recognize some of these things are state issues, some of them are city issues, but I've had students drop out of our schools and drive 40 minutes to go to another campus because they didn't feel safe here off of Bronson. I've had spouses of our staff members call me directly and ask me to transfer, to be it because they refuse to work here in Renton, especially when the days get shorter and gets darker. So, Renton's losing good people, and I think ultimately, good businesses will leave. What I'd like to be able to ask, and it's a simple ask tonight, is to invite you as council members to come and visit our complex. You know, Eric had shared a little bit about it, but come down to visit and talk to my students, talk to my staff, but also talk to the neighboring businesses. What Eric had shared right there is 100% accurate. So, you might be asking when you come down to visit and give up an hour of your lunch, you know, who you're gonna meet? You're gonna meet our students that have been harassed, that have been robbed, their cars have been broken into and stolen. You'll meet a franchisee of a sandwich shop that you wish, you probably wish he didn't operate a business here in Renton. You'll meet a family bakery, a church, a chiropractor that you've heard that their doors have been pried open, a pizza shop, you know, with their roof cut open. And then you also meet a smoke shop where they were robbed at gunpoint. All this is happening in our city. You're probably thinking, why would I want to accept my invitation to bring you down? It sounds miserable. The reason why you should accept the invitation is because meeting these people will actually give them hope, that somebody actually cares about them. That's what we all felt when the police chief came down, or Diane from the Chamber of Commerce. The city of Renton is a wonderful space to do business, or it once was, and knowing those who that are elected that want to do right by the community will encourage us to be able to relook at the city as we, the city that we came into. And so, I just wanted to be able to extend out the invitation to the council here, and I'd love to be able to invite you down to visit and meet up with the businesses here in that complex. Thank you so much.
Okay, and next up is Mark Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, and esteemed council members. As you know, on your agenda this evening will be the reading of ordinance AB 3470, which is regarding the street vacation that I and the members of our block submitted last year. First of all, I want to say thank you for the progress that has been made. We appreciate that you heard us. We're here tonight to ask you to hear our appeal. As you will see, the recommendation from the staff was for 100% compensation for the appraised value of the land. We had, in the end, 93% of the property owners signed the petition requesting this vacation. The additional fee that we have paid in 100%, it helps compensate the staff work that has been done on this, has been paid. However, achieving that, the percentage was not 93, so more of us had to eat the cost of that. As we go forward now with trying to raise $20,700 within 90 days, we anticipate an even lesser participation from the 41 property owners. So, we are a mixed block. It's not like there are a bunch of rich people with McMansions coming to you asking for this relief. It's a composite of nice newer homes and some homes that have been here for many, many years. So, we are just appealing to your sense of mercy and asking for zero compensation. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. And next up is Diane Dobson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President Prince, and council members. Diane Dobson, resident of Renton and CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, here to address a matter of utmost importance that pertains to the recent interactions involving council members and local businesses, particularly concerning Initiative 2302. It's come to my attention that there have been instances where council members have entered businesses and engaged in behavior that is both concerning and contrary to the values of our democratic society. Recent incidents have raised concerns about the use of bullying and intimidation tactics, tactics, as well as misinformation by council members when engaging with business owners who hold dissenting views. One of the pillars of a healthy democracy is the ability to agree to disagree. Our community thrives when diverse voices are heard and respected. It is crucial that our elected representatives embody these principles, particularly when interacting with business owners who may have differing perspectives. Intimidation and bullying tactics not only undermine the democratic process, but also erode the trust between the council and the community it serves. The Renton Business Plan stands as a testament to the dedication and hard work invested by council members to create a vision that promotes the well-being and prosperity of our city. It is disheartening to observe actions that seem counterintuitive to the inclusive and collaborative spirit outlined in this plan. Recent incidents of bullying and intimidation tactics employed by council members have the potential to divide our community and create a hostile environment directly conflicting with the values our city strives to uphold. In the spirit of fostering a respectful and inclusive community, I emphasize the importance of accuracy, truthfulness, and factual representation when council members enter businesses, especially those owned by individuals who speak English as a second language. When council members introduce themselves as representatives of the city of Renton, it is imperative that the information they provide is accurate and unbiased. Slandering business owners and other community leaders in front of customers is not only unprofessional, but also damages the reputation of our city. As a concerned resident and advocate for a thriving, inclusive community, I strongly urge the Renton City Council to establish a comprehensive code of conduct that guides the behavior of council members in their interactions with the business community and resident constituents. A code of conduct would serve as a valuable tool in ensuring that our council members uphold the highest standards of integrity and professionalism. Such a code should outline the expectations for respectful engagement, accurate communication, and a commitment to fostering an environment where diverse voices are not only heard but valued. I believe that by implementing a code of conduct, the Renton City Council can set a positive example for other communities and reaffirm its dedication to democratic values. It is my sincere hope that you will consider this urgent request and take prompt action to address these concerns. I thank you for your attention to this matter. I trust that together we can contribute to the continued growth and harmony of our beloved Renton community. Thank you very much.
And uh, we have one person sign up virtually. Yes.
One person in that is Monica Williams. Monica, go ahead.
Monica, you must be muted.
Yes.
There, I can hear you now.
Okay. Good evening. I propose that the change, um, the, um, I propose that the charge for manifestation and our anti-sexual related crimes be increased to the devastation it causes to victims and their family, causing lasting harm, especially those crimes that take place within church officials, school officials, or government officials. I also believe that the first offense should be judged harshly as well, and, um, repeated offenders should be put away for a longer time in kind of life for, um, mental malination or any sexual related crime. Um, I live in Renton and I'm asking for a policy change. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak at this time? All right, thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. There are nine items for council consideration. Are there any that would be pulled?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Prince.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
It's been moved by Council President Prince, seconded by Council Member Albertson, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business, Council President Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has five committee reports.
Right, Finance Committee committee reports. The first is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment $7,258,364.99 for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and zero wire transfers. Two is payroll, a total payment of $1,903,806.3 for payroll vouchers, including 642 direct deposits and five checks. This is for the December 16th through 31st, 2023 pay period. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Member O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding a grant from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the inter-agency agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to receive up to $4,500 in sub-grant funds to increase law enforcement participation in traffic safety enforcement and to serve as a resource for the regional Target Zero Manager. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the councils concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Right, the next report is regarding water grants from the Department of Ecology. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. First is the WQC 2024 Renton 00011 grant agreement with the Department of Ecology in the amount of $2,975,000 for the Southeast 172nd Street Water Quality retrofit capital improvement project. Two is WQC 2024 Renton 00036 grant agreement with the Department of Ecology in the amount of $206,550 for the Springbrook Terrace retrofit capital improvement project. And finally, WQC 2024 Renton 00204 grant agreement with the Department of Ecology in the amount of $7,950,050 for the Monroe Avenue Northeast Infiltration Facility Capital Improvement Project. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
I would like to acknowledge all the staff that worked in bringing in these grants and close to $2 million to help the city address some pretty significant and historical water quality drainage issues, both in the Highlands and Springbrook area, and it's through this kind of dedicated effort that we actually get the Department of Commerce being willing to help us to the tune of $2 million. This is awesome, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries.
The next report is regarding fee waivers for the 2024 Punggol event. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the request to waive the cost of the temporary event permit of $85 and the facility rental fee of the Don Person Senior Activity Center of $1,500 for a total waived amount of $1,585 for the January 20th, 2024 Punggol event. The organizer remains responsible for paying for the facility damage deposit of $550. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
I jumped in.
Councilmember Perez first, and then Councilmember O'Halloran.
I just want to say that it was an incredible event. I get to know better the Tamigo community in Renton, and I have to admire their culture, their traditions, and what a way to celebrate life in general. But I want to thank the Community Services Department and Remy for helping facilitating this to them. These events opened the doors of our communities to be able to be close to us and create a direct line of communication that helps us to connect with them and offer our services in a more inclusive way. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Uh, yes, I just, I want to echo what Councilmember Perez said, but also to say that this is an excellent example of the city going to the communities, the diverse communities, on culturally significant events in their calendar and being there, and especially to Remy and the team for being able to so quickly shift when Don Person Senior Activity Center sprung a leak. And to be able to move this entire event within just a couple of days to the community center was fantastic, and the, you know, the 250 people who were there or so, probably more, were just extremely, extremely thankful and grateful to the city. So, thank you.
All right. Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to echo my colleague's sentiment. I think this is one of the examples of making sure that not just the time and the circumstance, given this Don Person Senior Activity Center situation, but just the collaboration and partnership with community groups in celebrating such a wonderful Punggol holiday. And so, I want to applaud our staff, and thank you so much.
Anybody else? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
The final report from the Finance Committee is regarding a state and local cybersecurity grant. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the state and local cyber cybersecurity grant program contract E24-204 to accept $105,000 in grant funds to implement IT asset management and attack surface management programs for cybersecurity enhancement. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee's committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Albertson. Okay, Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We are on to legislation. We have one resolution.
This resolution is regarding an amendment to the bicycle and the trails in and Bicycle Master Plan. The resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting an amendment to the Trails and Bicycle Master Plan.
I move the resolution to be adopted.
That's right.
Second.